So with that, I will call the regular board meeting, school board meeting of the Oaks Public School to order at 6:56 a.m. Good morning. Good morning. We will stand to say I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The agenda is before you and Sheila would ask to be excused by 7:45. There is one item that we would like to add within action, which is we'll add item G. We have a number of teacher resignations for the upcoming school year. So we'll add that and I would like to move the executive session for the purpose of negotiating strategy up to below, just below action items. That be acceptable to everyone? With that, are there any other additions, corrections? With that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as we have with the changes I've noted?
I'll make a motion.
Rosendahl moves is their second. Schmidt's second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
Maybe we should wake up first.
Motion carries and the agenda is approved. I'd like to welcome all visitors. We have with us via Zoom, we have Vicki Kelly. April is in her office running the meeting. In the room, we have Dave, just Dave, Principal's beta and Sal, all board members and public communication. All right. So then we'll move right into the action items. In your pocket, there's a notice, proposed notice that polls will be open on Tuesday, June 1 in the Oaks Public Schools conference room from 11 a.m. to 7 p.m. The three-year terms for City of Oaks, John Baki filed and for the rural east of Highway 1, I have filed as well as Brian Sayer. Our task is to approve the school election notice with site and polling hours. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Thor comes to approve. Is there a second? Nagel seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. There is, there are two open enrollments in our packet. One is evidently for a student, a preschool student who, whose family wishes to open enroll out. Do we need to approve that?
This is the, you know, cross state line one. So I think just to be safe, we should.
Okay. And I don't, I see no reason to separate them out. The other is for a coming into kindergarten student who would, whose family wishes to open enroll from Ellendale into our district and those applications and paperwork are in your packet. Is there a motion regarding these two open enrollment requests? Nagel moves to approve the open enrollments. Is there a second?
Schmitt's second. Is there any discussion?
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries and the enrollments are approved. I hope that the discussion of the health insurance test won't mirror the length of the number of pages in the document. It was very complete. So thank you whoever did that. Who is leading the charge on that?
Right back.
I can see you.
I can, I can give you a little bit of an update. You know, originally the school, we were looking at joining the North Dakota Public Health Insurance Trust last year and we had, we had attended a number of meetings with the CIC and the Public Health Insurance Trust, but due to pandemic, we chose to hold off a year, not knowing what COVID would do and not wanting to have issues with insurance. And so we're basically a year from where we originally said that originally when we were going to sign up, their agreement was that you would, you had to pay a month's worth of premiums, which in our cases around that $40,000 to get into the trust. They were telling us that the premiums for the upcoming year, last year for this year would have been flat. And now they've changed so that if you join the trust, your premiums will actually go down 1% year one and remain the same year two. So you know that if you join the Public Health Insurance Trust, that the next two years, you'll have a net reduction of 1% of premiums if you choose to do that. In there, it talks about the number of schools that have, have joined that and including other entities across the state such as North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund. And so the number of participants in this Public Health Insurance Trust have, have grown and I believe will continue to grow. So the question is at hand is, do you want to join the Public Health Insurance Trust and, and go that route? We would have the same insurance for our staff. It would, it would be able to be the same deductible, just we wouldn't be paying the bill to Blue Cross Blue Shield. We would be paying our bill to the North Dakota Public Health Insurance Trust. April got information and Blue Cross Blue Shield told us that our premiums for this year will be going up somewhere in the range of four to 10%. We don't know what, whether it's four or whether it's 10.
And that, that's if we stay with the regular Blue Cross Blue Shield as opposed to moving into the trust plan. And can't it be a 2% decrease if we offer?
It can be a 2% decrease too, if you also offer the other options for visibility.
You just have to offer it. Nobody has to sign up for it.
Correct.
And we don't have to pay for those. Those are just offering to, for employees to pay themselves. That's the way I understand it.
Yep. And there's also that wellness benefit that we will join. Basically, we sign up and then you get another percentage, like a 1%, I think it was, discount just to do wellness activities. I did it when I was at the city and basically they're like PowerPoints you send out to the staff or since we have a wellness committee, they could do probably a program or extensive programs, like so many points a year. So it's pretty simple.
All right. It's still one year premium upfront.
At the end of your deal, it says more than likely a 10% increase, not a four. That's in that whole packet. More than likely a 10% increase.
With staying with our current, current plan. All right. Is, should, should, is it fair to say that your recommendation is to move in this direction with the trust?
Yeah, even though I'm not going to be part of the insurance pool because of not being here, my recommendation is to join the Public Health Insurance Trust. And I think that that's a prudent move on our, yeah. It's, it's a way that we can have, I believe, some more control of what our insurance increases will be over time because we'll have some flexibility in how we change, how we modify the plan if we see that need and desire to do so versus, well, here's your increase. Take it or leave it.
I think one of the nice things too is the policy really doesn't change. So nothing's going to change for them.
So the only downside is we need to have one month's premium paid into it?
Right. You gotta, you gotta have upfront costs.
Are there any other downsides, negatives that you can see?
Not that I'm aware of. No.
All right. Is there a motion? I'll make the motion that we move to the insurance trust with our health insurance plans. Nagel moves to join the North Dakota Public Health Insurance Trust for Oaks Public Schools Health Insurance Plans. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Rosendahl, seconds. Any further questions or discussion? Questions have all been answered. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. The next item is a memorandum of understanding. It's like page 40. Here we go. Memorandum of understanding between Oaks Public Schools and the Oaks Police Department. Do you want to give some background on this?
Sure. This is a, one of the results of the, you know, the report that Sigh is going to give on the personnel complaint. This memorandum of understanding is between the Oaks Police Department and the Oaks School. It would allow for sharing of information to the Oaks Police Department without us needing a subpoena every time to share information. So an example is if we're dealing with an issue and we're dealing with the camera system, we can share video footage to the police department if there's a law that's been broken without needing a subpoena from, you know, the state's attorney, Kim Ratammacher. This MOU was, was written up and, and sent to us by the Oaks Police Department, but was also reviewed by our city attorney, Jason Herdus. And I believe that this is a positive step in the right direction. And Brandon and I also met with Kim Ratammacher and with Chief of Police Matt O'Brien and talked about the relationship between the police department and us and when they believe we should have law enforcement involved and when they, when they shouldn't to make sure that we're having a, an open and collaborative relationship between the school and the police department.
Was this also reviewed by our Oaks Public Schools attorney?
It was not.
Okay. But do we believe then that we, we're this, using this MOU, we would still be in compliance with FERPA and state law and whatever? All right. Any questions? And you are asking us for official approval by the board?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion?
There's a motion to try to approve, improve your relationship with the police department sharing of information when incidents occur.
Correct. Because the hang up that we've had is, let's say that we contact the police department about a situation. Yep. And, and if the police department says, well, we'd like to see your video footage. We as administrators have technically said, sorry, that's a, that's, that is protected by FERPA. Especially if that video footage is being used for us to determine this one, then it becomes part of that student's educational record and is protected by FERPA. And so we've, we've been very hesitant as administrators to say, here you go, without getting, without getting a subpoena first. So this will allow us to be able to share that information. However, this, this doesn't mean that every time we have an incident or required to contact law enforcement, it would still be up to administrators discretion on when law enforcement will be contacted if we believe law was broken. But, you know, we also had the discussion that specifically age-wise, we're not going to be contacting law enforcement unless the child is 10 or older. So we had a situation this week with a kid that was less than 10 that was starting to get in the playground and fell down. And I asked Mrs. Oss that we need to contact law enforcement and I wasn't aware of the age at the time and, you know, she said, are you kidding? I said, no. I was serious about that. But because of the age of the student, that was, you know, that one was not contacted. If it was an older student, then there was a possibility also that plus a myriad of other pieces of information such as previous history with the kids and whatnot.
Is this something our, the school's attorney should review before we adopt it?
It might not hurt.
I think that's a good idea.
Just so, I mean, that covers school side.
I think it's a bad idea, but I agree for Ryan. It should be reviewed by our attorney.
Unfortunately, I'll like, this is going to use more than not. As soon as, in its, I mean, it just seems like you're dealing with more of these issues and parents don't care. Not now. But it's, it's frustrating because you hear they don't want it happening. You guys don't want it happening, but your hands are tied because all the law is protected. It's fine. It's not. Some of these kids need to be dealt with and I think it's smart, like you mentioned, and Ryan, have our attorney make sure it's one less thing to worry about.
Sure. I can do that and bring it back to me.
So we'll defer action on this until reviewed by our attorney. Very good. Moving on then. In your packet was the Behavioral Health Services Agreement between Oaks Public Schools and Sanford Clinic North, Sanford Clinic of Oaks. Want to bring us up to speed on this? This is an initiative coming from the Mental Health Task Force.
Yes, this is initiative from our strategic plan of mental health services. And what this is, is an MOU between us and Sanford and will, it will allow us to provide mental health counseling for staff and for students. And the school district will pick up the tab on that. And I can tell you that it's drastically needed. I'm getting requests weekly from staff saying, Craig, when is this going to be available? We need services for particularly our students. They're close. This has taken a long time to get through the red tape with Sanford. Now they're trying to get the credentials of the person that they're going to have do that. The person is not a resident of North Dakota. It's a resident of Minnesota. So now there's credentialing issues of getting that, your North Dakota credentials done there. I work with Bob Hagan and we're, we're very hopeful that this will start this spring yet, hopefully soon. And there's a need. It will be done electronically. So Larry has an iPad set up already to my office that will do tell, every teleman that it will be probably one of those rooms beside April or my office. And I believe it'll be used extensively. We're starting with simply four hours a week.
What, so the billing, I guess, just an idea, if we approve this, what are we looking at then?
Down to the district. Right. $200 a week.
But that's not per consultation. That's, they're here for four hours.
Yeah, correct.
Available. But I'm saying it's not, we're not charging 50 bucks per student. If we see 10 students in those four hours, it's 200 bucks. It's not 500 bucks. It's not 50 per visit.
But also if we don't use it, we're still going to be paying.
Which is about a $400, right?
Is mainly this from COVID or just like in general in the United States? Seriously, if they're dealing with this social media.
It was in our strategic plan and I, I feel like I failed terribly by not giving this going last year or any I'm a year and, a year behind getting this, getting this rolling where we have some sort of services available to our students and to our staff.
Back like more than a year ago when I was still going to state school board meetings and having lunch with various superintendents, including Josh Johnson, Carrington, you know, all of them, even two and three years ago where there were so many mental health issues and they weren't getting services coming in or they had arrangements. I'm very much in favor of this and I think it will be less than what is needed. What have we sought? Are there grants available or funding that could assist if we need to expand the number of hours?
We can look. I'm not aware of them.
I know Burgum Foundation had been funding some of that and I'm guessing maybe with, there's COVID dollars and whatever, and some of those, of course, where all of them have end dates, but it, it could be supplemental at least for a period of time. Any other questions or is there a motion to approve this agreement?
How many weeks are in?
It's, it's, it's year long.
Year long.
Yeah.
Summer time too?
Yeah, we said mental health won't stop during the summer.
Okay, so.
I mean, mental health issues won't stop during the summer.
So right now this would be a $10,000.
Correct. Yep.
And so will students come here into the school then in the summer for their appointments?
That's what I would believe that to be the case, but if we're able to do it, if we're able to do it from a different location than you do from home, that might be a possibility too. But for now, we're planning on maybe coming and use our, our technology.
And there's a certain window of time that would be our.
Yeah, we're gonna, Bob's gonna try to give us two, two hour periods of time per week. I think one's going to be a morning, one's going to be an afternoon. And obviously if those periods of time are struggles or else we can make adjustments to that in collaboration with Sanford. That's what we're going to start with. One thing I talked about with is we don't want it to always be, you know, all four hours on the same date. So if we have someone that's repeatedly going into there, they're missing the same class, the same.
I was going to ask you, because also when you get a group, you have two or three people that might use the majority of the time. At that point, do they have to say, we need some private therapy outside of this public? I mean, this is a big school. I mean, 500 people have access plus now 600. Also, you have a few people eat that hour or two. That's me. I mean, that's up to therapists obviously to work with that, but you could see that. And then I'd like to see them get help on their own. This is start. You need more when it goes back to your private.
All right. Is there further discussion or a motion? How will we go about having the kids, you know, decide who's coming in and who's not? Is that going to be recommendations by teachers or?
We need to set that up with Sanford about, you know, obviously the counseling department and the principal will be involved in that too, but how we get kids into that program, whether it's recommendations or it's volunteered minutes.
I'm sure not going to be able to sign up.
Yes.
I would make the motion to approve that. It's definitely something that we really needed to offer to these children, especially those that don't have support. Nagel moves to approve the Behavioral Health Services Agreement with Sanford. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Schmidt's seconds. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Moving on to the driver's ed vehicle specifications.
I've got good news with that and then I've got, yeah, not great news in terms of needing to spend money. The good news is in doing some digging and talking with, with Vicki and then looking through the driver's ed requirements is that the North Dakota Central Code, Chapter 37-13-03, Driver Training Vehicle Requirements, number one is vehicles may not be used for driver training purposes which are more than 10 model years old. So our Impala is a 2010. It is 11 model years old. However, for a period of time, we believed that it was actually a requirement that it be five years old or less. It is only a recommendation for doing driver's ed when you're doing the waiver. The waiver means that we're allowing their kids, if they pass, they don't need to take the driving test again, which is a benefit to our students of not needing to sign up and get in. It, it's a recommendation that the vehicle is only five years old or less. However, it's a requirement that our vehicle not be 10 years old or older. So we're in need of a vehicle. I asked April to get quotes from both Blue Mart as well as Law Motors on leasing and purchasing. And April can pipe in if I'm saying anything incorrectly. Blue Mart said with paying tax, title license, it's not really conducive for them, what they would have charged us for leases. They were not interested in leasing it to you. So we have an option of a purchase. Law Motors, I believe, said the same thing about not leasing. It was going to get April some prices. April, did you hear anything from Jeff on options from Law, which would be used obviously?
No, no. And I've been checking my voicemail and everything, so I have not heard back from Jeff. But yeah, Cory returned what's in your packet for the Equinox he has on the lot.
And when we, when we traded the other car in, if you want us to trade the car in, it seems that we got around 4,000 if I remember right from the other one, 2008. This is a 10. Mileage is similar. I believe that Impala has about 150 some thousand miles. So if you want us to ask about a trade-in or if you want us to sell it outright, we could do probably either of those things. I don't, I don't think that we need to keep it unless you really feel the need and desire to have four school vehicles, but I don't think we need them.
How, that 10-year deal though, that still just happens to me that that's in there. And the other, after more thought of them all, just realistically, I know you said two vehicles are necessary. How many hours are required for instruction? And how many students do we have?
Six hours of driving plus six hours of riding and we're in the mid 40s for students.
Vicki is actually online. She might be able to answer some questions too.
Are, all the students are signed up now? And, and are they all, are all 40 students Oaks Public Schools students? I know sometimes we get a few students from other districts.
I actually have over 50 kids this year because of kids from last year that were not 14 yet. And it's going to be tough for Don and I just to get through those 50 kids of driving.
With two vehicles.
With two, in, in two vehicles. It's, it's going to be a full summer. Granted, this year is a large class of eighth graders, but normally we have in the 40s, high 30s to get through. And no, we do not take out of district kids anymore.
As in, I just want to make sure. When we say the time, if it's, obviously I'm not saying this would be ideal, but you know, if you have two instructors in one vehicle, you don't always have to have from eight to noon. You could have different times of the day if that's a possibility. Just because we're looking at $28,000 here for a vehicle that the district has a lot of other needs too.
Well, Robert, if, if we keep the Impala, then that cannot be a waiver car. So the kids who drive in that Impala would not get the waiver certificate. And the kids that drive in the SUV would.
I would say is if you only used one vehicle, it'd have to spread the gay out more.
I mean, Don and I are, we're busy and, and you, because they're 14, you have to quit before sundown. And we're working around baseball games. Mr. Dobitz is real. He, he works well with working around practice, but games, no. You know, then we get later into June and July and we have camps of all kinds. We have families taking trips.
You're needing, I mean, based on your students, you're needing 300 hours plus in the car. I remember years ago when I drove for Thrillington. I had 46 the first year I caught a milner. I started driver's ed in May. I think it was like the end of May and I had to coach football. I got done August 6th or 7th and I drove every day except for Saturday and Sunday. And it was just, that's the only way I got that done, starting in May and all the way through August and we, it was, it was brutal. But the other issue is the car sometimes like other cars has issues. And then all of a sudden, if you got a breakdown, then you're, you're having to wait or adjust or, and you know, my, my recommend, or my issue with driver's ed kids near the end was that not every kid always showed up either and then we'd have to reschedule and change. And so personally, I don't think it's feasible to do with one car. I think we need two vehicles and I think they will need to fall within the requirements of 10 model years old as my opinion.
Well, I'd like to see quotes on some used ones.
It's just low and he said nothing yet. It's nothing. It's a tight market. It's a tight market for everything right now.
Vicki, when does driver's ed start? So we know a timeframe of when we need it by?
June 1st.
Uh, I mean, I prefer that to your idea.
Did Blue Card have any used ones on the lot, April?
Um, yes, he, he did have some used ones, but they were more money. And they, he only, he didn't have an Equinox, he had a Traverse, he had two two thousand and eighteen Traverses, and they were over thirty thousand.
And I looked at it. Not very high, or the selection was low when the prices were high. I guess, Vicki, I would just like to get back to that. I understand kids have a lot going on, but they do need to realize that if the district is putting all this for them, you're taking your time, Don's taking his time. They need to be a little more flexible on, you know, what means more, getting a driver's license or baseball practice, so. Just going forward.
Well, I think being able to operate with the waiver so our kids can test without them and their parents having to take a half a day to drive to Jamestown or Fargo, I think that's tremendous service and advantage. And good PR for the school district to be able to provide that, so I, I would favor this, and it, it feels to me like this is, we may not do much better than this, if at all, getting a used vehicle.
What is the other vehicle, the stuff, what's the other one we're using?
Twenty-seventeen E-Bucks.
Seventeen?
Yep, with about sixty thousand miles.
There's no limitation on miles, is the year?
No, yep, yep, again, it's recommended five years or less, required ten years or less, so you don't, you're not gonna need to update that one based on the requirements. Unless you would follow the recommendations of, of five or less, but that, that one has the backup camera, it has those things that, that, this one will have too.
So if we can, if we're talking about a twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand dollar cost with the warranty, something like that, twenty-nine? And if we can trade, if we're trade or sell the old vehicle for three, four, five thousand dollars, then that cost is that much less. Thoughts? Motion?
April, Blue Mart must sell a car, that's fine. We have a couple days to see if there's any results. But I guess, uh.
I just, I would touch base with him on Tuesday and kind of know the feelings of the board. I can see if he can find anything else, and I can reach out to Jeff again.
I wouldn't mind either, just looking to make sure this is.
Seeing actions.
I agree that we need to have the two cars available, I'm just not so sure that a brand new one is.
Do you want us to, do you want to signal farther than local and search?
I think we can, because we have tried local, and we're not saying no to local yet, but there's a point where he goes to district.
Yeah, we just do due diligence and see if somebody as far as Valley City or Walton. Anyway, um, see if, if, um, at least see some options, and then we may find out this is a great deal, or not. Okay, all right, so no action on that, but. Okay, Robert, Robert's on it. All right, uh, so no action on that, but not, not saying that we don't support it. So, thank you, Vicki, and thank you, uh, April. Vicki has left us look fine. All right, next item on the agenda then is resignations. Do you wanna share those with us?
Yes, we have, uh, three resignations as of today, and one is, uh, Ms. Hess, our elementary music teacher. One is, uh, Mrs. Christensen, our high school science teacher, and then one is Mrs. Forward, our junior high, math teacher. And so I recommend that, and I'll, you can take a look at the letters, recommend that you approve those. We have publicly already opened, um, the music position as well as, I think that's the only one that's been public. The staff have all been advised of the opening, which is a requirement of our negotiated agreement. They've, they've been open, but we'll get them out there as soon as possible and try to get candidates in and try to beat the time if we can in terms of finding candidates before they're hired elsewhere.
All right, and if anyone is, uh, familiar with any teachers elsewhere, or bright young educators coming out of college, please direct their names to our administrators. That's sometimes some things that, you know, some young educators that I was aware of when, you know, kids that my son played ball against or with, and I'd say, hey, this is a bright young kid, and give him or her a look. And, and sometimes that's really helpful. Or if you have instructors at other schools that are good, that we could entice, that would be great too. All right, uh, so we do need to approve those resignations or accept those resignations. My view, all of them would be accepted with regret, but is there a motion to accept the resignations of Ms. Hess, Mrs. Christensen, and Mrs. Forward as presented to us this morning? Rosendahl makes that motion. Is there a second? Nagel's seconds. Is there any discussion?
I, I'm just saying thank you to all three of them for their years of service to OPS, and wish them the best of their future endeavors.
Absolutely, all right, thank you. Is there any further discussion or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries, and we accept those resignations with regrets, and wish all of three of them the very best in their future endeavors. Uh, with that, we have moved the executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy up to this point in the agenda. I appreciate that Sheila is still here. So, is there a motion to move into executive session pursuant to what, April? Oh, right there, oh, it's on our agenda, sorry.
Four dash oh-four dash one-eight-point-two-seven for negotiating, teaching negotiations.
But on the agenda, it says fifteen-point-one dash sixteen dash twenty-two. But I'll, I'll trust that you'll put this into the minutes correctly. I, I think there are some different references, but anyway, is there a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiating strategy? Nagel makes the motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Bill Schmidt's seconds. All those in favor say aye. No? Motion carries. We will enter into executive session at seven-thirty-four, and I guess I'll ask, who, who do you want to remain in? Should we have to keep our principals, but not Dave? Then we need to, uh, I think, I think we should ask Dave to leave and Brennan and Sean Creighton, we're all so on. What's your recommendation?
You could ask me to leave too.
Thanks, Dave. All right, I asked for us to have a two, that where we're at, eight oh-two, and you can end the recording. Okay, we are re-entering open session. Um, I see now we have Ms. Sheila, Mr. Creighton, um, Dave can come back. All right, thank you. Uh, with that, the next item on the agenda is the report on the personnel complaint. All right, I reviewed, of course, I sent all of you my, my, um, report. Um, I, I also sent it to Amy Clark, our attorney, and I asked her advice with regard to handling it at the meeting. And because the superintendent was involved, and I did the, uh, did the investigation, then according to the policy, hope I have it handy, that, um, I'm supposed to, well, personnel, thank you, Sheila, just make a recommendation based on the outcome to the board for final action. Amy Clark advised that I, I asked the board not to reference hearing the child's names during the discussion, and encourage questions about the incident or the investigation without referring to child names or parent names, and that the focus of the meeting should be on my recommendations. My recommendations were on the last page of the report, which is page fifty-nine of your packet. And my recommendations were that the, our administrators collaborate with the police department, the state's attorney, and legal counsel to develop an understanding of when and what information must or may be, and may be shared with local enforcement. The collaboration has been done, and we previously said, yes, now please make sure that's reviewed by our legal advisor. Uh, the next recommendation is that our administrators collaborate with the police department and the city to explore the possibility of role of and potential funding sources for a school resource officer. Note that I did not recommend that we get one, that's not my decision. But, um, my recommendation is, um, I, I heard positive comments about some of our experiences when we had a school resource officer, however, staffing shortages, you know, near the end of that last arrangement resulted in not having the services that we had previously had and enjoyed. I would recommend that we at least look into the availability of potential funding, the cost, how it would look, and we then say either, yeah, that looks good, or no, we aren't going to go that direction.
Can we, can I, because we're both people in decisions when we had a resource officer. Did you see any difference when we had one?
No, high school was just, communication was easier to go right next door if there's a concern, and it was easier to share information if there was something that was criminal. He also was able to meet with kids or go in class with kind of like a counselor, so there was that connection too. That was only for my first year, I think, when we dropped. But he was here for two years, three years, so how long did we have? Brock was an SRO. I had him when we were teaching, I think, four, based on the.
I think, the, the resource officer was four, but we maybe didn't have him for the last year of the whole deal.
Yeah. I remember my first year, Brock and I worked on quite a few things that came up.
The COPS grant is, you have to have guarantee for three years funding, and then you have to provide it the fourth year, so he was supposed to be guaranteed four years of the SRO. That was one of the requirements of the COPS grant.
And I would say, uh, Chief O'Brien was extremely cooperative and helpful, and, um, he, he said he would be happy to come in, you know, he's done a lot of digging and research and what they do elsewhere, and he said it's all over the place, it's not, there is not one single formula. And, um, he is willing to come to do work on it and.
How many other districts have SROs? We know, like, I'm just going on some other size, like the Garringtons and, is it getting more, obviously, I think getting more popular or more standard, I don't know. What do other districts do?
I, I don't know if districts, a lot of districts are smaller than us that have one. Most of them are our size or bigger.
It's gonna be this.
Yeah, that have one, right?
Anyway, so my recommendation is that we research it and this, and bring back information to discuss. Uh, third, uh, review current practices for staff supervision at recess and other places where students interact outside the classroom, determine whether additional staff may be needed for supervision. I don't think that more staff, more eyes are going to see every single thing, but I think that there are times when it would be helpful, I would just ask that we review that. And perhaps, you know, looking at when Mrs. Stell said, uh, maybe we'll be looking for a third section of kindergarten, perhaps another alternative would be adding a para for each classroom, and then having that, that para position available for additional, um, additional supervision, as one possibility. Fourth, uh, that our administrators review current communication plans and protocols related to communicating with parents of victims and perpetrators. Consider whether it would be helpful to develop a short, simple written guide to give to parents that outlines the main point. One thing was that, you know, you have, um, administrators who have just, uh, who, who have witnessed some, uh, an event and apply the discipline, and you have parents who are upset and distraught, and that's not the best situation for the best communication. Maybe there are better strategies to use, I know when, when we, when we talk about coaching, coaching sports, we're often, as parents, we're often told that if, if you're upset, there's that twenty-four hour cooling off period, don't come until twenty-four hours later. That's a, a suggestion. Another thought is that a parent, and that I failed to put in here, but if, if a parent is upset and meeting with an administrator, should there be a third sort of neutral party, the school nurse, the counselor, in the room? So that if there's a misunderstanding, there's someone there that says, hey, this is what I heard. Just a review of our communications protocols. Finally, uh, or not finally, but yeah, finally, it's, it's, um, policy review. As I said, uh, in this paragraph, it's clear that implementing policy when there's a specific incident is very different than us sitting in front of this board and adopting policy when we don't have that in front of us. And, um, very much, uh, learned that there are conflicting policies and multiple policies and, laws and regulations that overlap and override, and it's, it's a confusing web, so. Um, there are policies that I would like us to review at future board meetings, and I will, if, if that is, um, the agreement of the board, then I will put those on future boards for review. So with that, those are my recommendations, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the incident, the investigation.
Did you meet or talk to the parents after you gave them this report?
I have not, and I thought that I, I would, um, follow up with them. They did not contact me either.
That was gonna be my question, what was their response, their feelings? Positive, negative, or? Kind of curious what, what their thoughts are.
Well.
This is, to be honest, I mean, it's sad that we have this many policies to deal with, I mean, it's tough being an administrator, teacher in this day and age, it's just, it's so frustrating sitting here going, hear something like this, and just go, bam bam, that's what it should be, but it can't, because there's so many conflicting policies, you know, whether it be bullying or this event, like, yo, my eyes again, but it, it's just frustrating. You know, I've been through it myself personally, and it, it's when you bring a child into it, you get emotional, and there's not, you're never gonna change that, you are never gonna change that. I think you did a great job, and, you know, you met with people, you discussed it, that's all we could do. You got people's kids, and they get in situations like this. Right policy, and that's like, we have to, like, the policies are there, but that's, I think you did a good job breaking down what you guys looked at, or sort of looking at certain things, it, it's just because we have people's kids involved, and it's just a different society, and it's sad.
And, and you do remember that there were multiple kids involved.
That's, 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 I mean, it's, when someone, when you, I guess, I didn't watch it either, you watched videotape of what happened, and I'm sure it's very frustrating. But again, that's, it's a different world. Our school board wouldn't have the discussion, I was that age.
I will say that, um, Chief O'Brien, uh, was complimentary of our administrators frustrated, but they were frustrated with what, you know, how they felt their. And he said, I feel like your administrators have the best interest of all the kids at heart, and they're, you know, there will be disagreements on things. But I don't feel like, as a board, we can sit around this table and adopt policy with, if this is what happened, then this is, should be the, the discipline, if this happens, it's this. There's just too many variables that we have no way of knowing about. That we have to, if, if, if repeatedly our administrators are doing, are, are implementing decisions and disciplines that turn out, or we believe are wrong, then we can't trust them. We need to trust our, our administrators, or, or we can't, um, we, we can't make decisions about an, an incident that is going to take place six months from now, that we have no idea what the variables are.
No, I said, I think you, because I can break down the policies you. No, I said, I think you, because I can't break down the policies yet, I said, I, I see nothing. You know, I would not want to be in your position, period. You know, this is a very difficult job. I've, it's, it becomes emotional when there's, you could put, also there's an event that happens, then you get to apply generic, not, you know, they're very generic policies that try to deal with this. And guess what? I know you guys love kids and this isn't, this was, no one wants to deal with this, but you have to and I appreciate what you did too.
Well, I tried to do the best I could and, you know, sometimes that, it took longer than I wish it did, but I tried. I wanted to be thorough, so. Anyway, I would appreciate if I would have a motion to adopt or approve my recommendations and we will carry on then with those and follow up with, in future, you know, we'll be asking for, you know, what's going on with the school resource officer, what's going on with communication plans, practices for supervision of recess, holding our staff accountable for that. And the board will be held accountable then for reviewing and discussing those policies more deeply.
Just a motion to accept your recommendation then move forward.
Okay, Schmidt's moves to accept my recommendations. Is there a second? Rosendahl's seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion further? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries and I appreciate your efforts and review of this. We will get these policies on the agenda and we'll expect the administrators to follow up on those items that we directed.
Do you have a timeline of when you want those to be done? May, June, July?
See what progress can be made by May. I think with regard to the communication plan, I think you and I talked that we, you, you and your administrators should come up with review and recommendations for changes to the communication plan and to present that to our new superintendent for review and, and reflection.
Okay.
Okay, I think, the, I'd like to, I think we should be able to hear something about your research and, and on resource officer and recess supervision by the next time, by our next meeting in May. Same reason.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Does that bring us to school policy review? I think it does. We have second readings. We're there. We have for second reading FGBB, FGCC, which interestingly involves student interviews and interrogation under custody by school resource officers, student handbooks, student publications of freedom of, and freedom of expression and education of homeschooled students. These are policies that we looked at last month. Where, and they were in more of a final form in this month's packet. Were there any questions or concerns about adopting a second reading of these five policies? If not, is there a motion to approve those five policies as a second reading and final adoption?
What did we, Brian had talked to me about this too, that question. Do we have any students that are in like a hybrid homeschool, half district, half homeschools type dealers that pretty much all are on there?
We have, we have some kids that are taking elective courses. Like, I know that we get kids that are attending the center. They, around around the only option, they get kids that are taking some of our courses versus some homeschool, some in, in.
I would say we just have here, this is the one that's kind of doing the hybrid. There's not, there's not too many that are, you know, half and half or anything like that.
The other two I have for one junior high and one high school are pure distance learning, so I don't have any of that half and half.
Distance learning. So they're enrolled at Oaks Public School and they're doing distance learning. Okay, are you asking more about students who are homeschooled, would they come for band?
Yeah.
I have that in the past, but not this year, I don't.
Yeah, that was my question, in the future or currently, if we have someone doing the hybrid, how that would be treated? So that was.
I remember some years back when there were a couple of families that homeschooled except for, say, music programs. I don't know if they came in for.
They are, yeah.
That was just a question, how that would be treated if, if they were involved and those involved in athletics, involved in other things with this policy?
Okay, so my question would be then, would, it, it, did, did we issue diplomas to those families whose kids only came for band or who came for egg? I, I would think that we would not issue a diploma. I, I don't, I, I think that's, I think that's the answer. The answer is no, we would not issue them a diploma. They, they would not have been.
The policy states they have to be full-time in regular Oaks Public School District, District Educational Program. We do have a few homeschool students that are in our extracurricular activities like archery. But otherwise, I don't think there's anyone that's been in, like I said, have the hybrid where they're enrolled in band or any A classes. I think last year there was, but not this year.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. Yep.
And is that acceptable in the policy? I don't know why we would issue a diploma to someone who was fully homeschooled, but they come for band or.
No, I, I agree. I was thinking more hybrid as in taking more classes than just band.
Okay.
If, I'm just saying, the, the rhetorical question, if that would happen, how would it be treated? If you had somebody doing.
I think at that time we could revisit, I mean, this is our policy now.
Right, okay, so.
And say, is this, is this sufficient? You know, as, as we met with Garrett Swanson and made a decision to make an exception in that for how he's being educated in this last semester.
Right, yeah, just so that, just so that option is there to be evaluated like in Garrett's case, so.
All right. Is there, did we get a motion to approve these, I'm sorry, help me. Okay, is there a motion to approve these five policies as second readings and final adoption? Thorpe moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Schmidt's seconds. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries and the policies are adopted. We have three board regulations. One, we carry DKBB board regulation, we carried over from last month. And that's the one regarding liquidated damages for granting release from contract. The other two are reviewing complaints about instructional material and student education and privacy records. Let's take granting release from a contract, that one we carried over from last time. I think the expression last time was that we thought we should have a little bit steeper penalty for after August first. Did we make it, did we make a change to that April? Or, or is this?
No, there were no changes to it, it was discussed, but nothing was ever brought up, I guess, presented to me. So it does say at ten percent be calculated.
Okay, board, what are your thoughts? Sheila, I recall thought that we should have a little bit more, a higher penalty for that. And if we want to carry it over again, I guess I'm not, I don't think there'd be anything wrong with that, but.
Is there any reason we can't just pick, you know, the five percent, or five, ten, fifteen? Are you even gonna get to June fifteenth, you're getting tight. I hope that I'm using this, but it should be something like, you know, before they sign.
Years ago, I do remember being on an interview team, it was probably many years ago because it was probably when Art was still here, sitting around the table interviewing. And we were interviewing a, a potential teacher from a neighboring district who had already signed their contract with that district and they went, oh, it's no big deal. I, I can just, I can get out of that contract. And it, and there even, there was a penalty, I think, to that person. But I think that they may have thought that the penalty would be waived and I don't remember if we hired them or not, but that bothered me a lot.
First thing I get, you jump and hire, I mean, five, and then it's going to ten, it's going to fifteen. So doesn't, at least Mark, talking six, eight grand.
All right, is that a motion then to amend this? Okay, Schmidt's moves to amend the policy to change the penalty in item two from seven and a half to ten and in item three from ten to fifteen. So the penalties.
That's one more question. Like the first one, five percent is honor before June fourteen. When, when's the beginning? Okay, like we got three today.
Once they sign, once they've signed their contracts, they've turned in a signed contract, you're hired for next year after negotiation.
Yeah, good.
And so in a non-negotiating year, it would be approximately March fifteen.
That's what's necessary, so I was thinking more a regular year. So, so if we get these next year, they could be possibly five percent if it was in March fifteen. But because negotiations are open.
Yes.
Just to have that.
Okay, there's a motion to amend the policy to change the penalties for, to five, ten, and fifteen. Is there a second to the amendment?
I'll second.
Thorpe's second. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. The motion carries and the policy or the board regulation is amended. Now, any discussion on the amended board regulation, any further discussion? Any further discussion on the regulation as amended? Hearing none, let's vote on this board regulation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. The motion carries and the regulation is adopted as amended with penalties of five percent, ten percent, and fifteen percent for what is specified in the policy. All right, then that leaves us with item two under board regulations, which is FGA board regulation and GAC. The one thing I would say about GAC, where is that one? Is, oh. Oh, here we go. It says, the first line says, the board shall appoint annually. And I quite honestly do not remember that we have ever officially appointed annually this review committee. I suspect had there been an instance where an instructional book or something been objected to or questioned, then we would have. My question is, is this something that we really should have in place and we should add to our annual meeting agenda like our, in an official newspaper and the things that we adopt? And it's pretty cut and dried with regard to who must be on it, with the exception of, it's like two teachers from each building and a parent. The policy says that we shall do that annually and I don't believe we've been doing.
Do you think we could change the wording so that it says what needed? That's what I was thinking.
Because there may be a time where you're gonna have instructional materials needed, but it's not come up, you know, recently. So do it and then not have it there. I wonder if you could reword it in a way that would just say as necessary or as needed.
I don't know if this is a, it's a recommended regulation, so I don't, I, I think we have more in view as to how it would be done. One thing that comes to mind is the recent controversy about Dr. Sue's books. Maybe somebody will bring that up, but.
What is a media specialist?
A librarian. I guess one, one might say that if, if you are appointing a committee after a need arises that you might appoint someone who is biased rather than appointing someone who doesn't say much. But I, I, I think that could be overcome. So is there a motion then to amend this regulation to, instead of annually, annually before the commencement of the school year, to replace that with when needed?
Or as necessary?
As necessary. All right, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And Thorpe moves to strike the words annually before the commencement of the school year and replace with as needed. Okay, is there a second?
A second.
And Rosendahl's seconds, I almost made you pay. All right, and is, is there anything in the rest of the policy that is, that would need to be changed for that to maybe got changed? I don't think so. Please bring it to our attention if you notice that, April, as you're updating this. All right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of making that change to the policy, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. We now have before us the amended board regulation procedure for revealing complaints about instructional resource material. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. And we have skipped over FGA board regulation. What did I bring to your attention on that, April? Oh, yes, I remember. The numbering is incorrect with the place that she's put this addition.
Yep, I corrected the numbering.
She's corrected that and, and I question, you know, it does say that, where does it say? Okay, under amending an educational record, it says this procedure shall not be used to dispute a grade, a disciplinary decision, or opinions and reflections of a school official contained in an educational record. And my question was, what else is there that you could dispute? And the one thing that came to my mind was attendance. So for example, if a student's attendance, you know, say they didn't attend enough days to be considered qualified to graduate or moving, whatever. That to me is one of the only things I could think of that a parent could dispute. And Carrie was deemed to be the expert on educational records and sent me an email and reply and, there are other things in your educational record like health information. Well, I suppose if it's incorrect, you could dispute it, but nobody else gets to see that and you can't release that. So I have no problem with this policy evidence. So is there a motion to approve this board regulation? Rosendahl moves to approve board regulation FGA. Is there a second?
Second.
Schmidt's second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. There's no existing policy review this month, so let's move on to reports. The AAD report was in your packet. Anything you want to highlight, Mr. Haff, or any questions?
Just highlight the couple that had qualified for state speech in Mandan. Excuse me, we had Amy, Isabel, Garrett, Chloe, and Laura. And that held at the convention center in Mandan on April twenty-fourth coming up here. Other than that, we had the couple of music performances in Oaks. And then really just our spring sports are just kind of, kind of kicking off here. And unfortunately with the weather, we're gonna have some delays right away here, but that's, that's kind of the main points.
Okay, questions? If not, let's move on to Mrs. Salz's report.
Yeah, I think April said to my, or any.
Yes.
So, yeah, we're just starting in DSA, we're doing the practice test this week, you'll be moving on, so the teachers are planning for that. Ms. Hess, as we saw that she resigned, so we've been reaching out to some people because in elementary, I mean, we'd really love to have an element, or be a music person, but we don't have to have a music person. So if it comes down to it, I would be looking for the better teacher versus just necessarily the content knowledge in the elementary. So I've kind of been reaching out, we have to made it a fighting column, and she, she looked really, not for that job specifically, but she had reached out to us. So hopefully we'll be able to build that. But otherwise, you have everything else. You have any questions?
I had a question on the spring concert. Why is that not happening?
Because they're not even singing, and we still have classes that are masked and they're not singing. And going against the better judgment of the COVID and the recommendations, they haven't been singing, and they're so, they're not ready for an elementary concert right now. But in the fall, hopefully we can have a concert again. For Christmas, I guess it would be for us, right? But she is going to do some, you know, something like that, a recorded concert of some kind.
All right, any other questions? If not, Mr. Data.
You guys have a report just love shows this month for March students, the month of Elena, Eleanor, Ethan German, and Megan Miller, I love those. Congratulations to those four students. Moving down the line, SRCTC March students, Word of Excellence, what is awarded to Garrett Meal. Congratulations to him at U-Side, that was a great honor for him. And then we have National Technical Honor Society occurring here coming up Wednesday, April twenty-eighth at Milner. That's Grace, Dave, Sadie, Hansen, Garrett Meal, and Andrea Wisner. That's a high honor for those four. That goes through academic requirements as well as nominations through SRCTC staff. So well done to those four. State math council, Kenton Buckey, he placed twenty-six out of one hundred and fourteen participants. So I told him, great job yesterday, he's pretty excited. And I said, hey, was that test a little harder than the first couple of years I took? He goes, yeah, he goes, that was quite a bit harder, but he said he had a good time and he knew quite a bit of it. So congratulations to him. And then finally for students, we had a national contest for NASA. Anseli Helgerson submitted an essay in two thousand semifinalists. Here, we represent the entire state of North Dakota, nine through twelve grades. There's a hundred and fifty-five semifinalists, and they're gonna whittle that down to nine. That's coming up, so talked to her, and she was extremely excited, actually was walking halls and heard some hoop and holler, and I stopped, I said, everything okay? And it was her high five and some French, she was, you'll begin to email soon, so you'll know why I'm so happy. And then it took about three days for me to finally, you know, like, I was really concerned that something was happening, but so she was really excited. And then we were able to put some information out to the paper and to Facebook. So congratulations to her, that's quite an honor. Everything else you guys can see, we're also wrapping up ELA testing for state assessment. Science starts this week. Math will start the week after, twenty-six, on the twenty-sixth. We had ninth graders starting registration yesterday for classes for next year, so that'll go this whole week and get everything finalized. And this is kind of a rough draft of class numbers and what kids want to take. Otherwise, you can see prom, state student council, in terms of my parents. Any questions you might have?
Any questions? Hearing none, let's move on then to the superintendent's report.
I have three shout-outs. First one, dear coaches, I have been very pleased with how the Oaks wrestling program has supported the growth of my kids on and off the mat. Moving my family to Oaks has been a tremendous success for us during very uncertain times. I want to send a most sincere thank you to all the coaches, the well-run wrestling program, the wrestling fans and families, and the Oak School District for buses, facilities, the support and everything else. May you all be blessed beyond what's imaginable. Thanks to you, Justin Foss and the Foss family. The next one, I want to give a shout-out to Mrs. Miller because she is an amazing teacher and person. She really shows interest in her children and takes the time to learn each student individually. She offers to help families any way she can. I just can't say enough about her and how much she understands my daughter and how much she has helped her deal with everything this year and given her the best learning experience she has had here. She adds humor to the day to break up all the hard work her class is doing each day. Thank you, Mrs. Miller, for being the best teacher I could hope for my child. And then I got another one too yesterday. My kiddos, my kiddo loves Mrs. Quant and Ms. Katie. She has grown so much this year, and I know much of that can be attributed to the attention, care, and love she gets from Megan and Sadie every day. Thank you. So congratulations to our Q twelve shout-outs. The next piece is the science floor deflection. Sherry came and talked to me and also talked to me about the tile floors popping in her classroom, and her curious concern was that the overhang, it was near the overhang, that window that jets out, she was worried about that dropping or, you know, possibly having issues. So we brought Kurt Sandman back to have a look at that before we just started fixing flooring. And Kurt used a rotary laser leveled and determined that the floor deflection, there it is, in room three oh eight. Which, which one's Sherry's room, is that three oh eight?
Three oh four, three oh six, yeah.
Okay, it's the two, it's the two science floor rooms, and it's the room that's got all the extra weight on it because of the science tables. And then, you know, it's, I don't know, it's slate or marble or whatever it is on the top. Anyway, in four, in four years, our floor has deflected, which means it's shrunk down another eighth of an inch. And Kurt Sandman said, you cannot allow this to go any longer without fixing this. He said, but he, and he said in there before fixing it in the summer of twenty twenty-two, he said it's not possible. So what, what he's recommending is the floors and the science labs need to be reinforced, which means because the floor joices are wood, and they're hand-sawn wood, and that wood just keeps compacting from the weight, which, you know, wasn't designed for science tables and equipment back in the day when it was built in nineteen twenty-three. And, you know, to do what they're talking about doing, they've got, obviously, got a hole in the floor, put in new floor joices. And I don't know what the cost is gonna be, but he kind of whispered to Carrie, it said, I'd be preparing for somewhere between four and six hundred thousand. I don't know if he just, he's got an idea, you know, I don't know what it's all gonna take, but that's gonna be something that's coming to you, not this summer, but at a later date. He also said now would probably be the time to have a discussion if you're gonna be doing changes about maybe even moving the science rooms down the road. So nothing asked me down this summer, just a heads up. It's, it's needing attention, and according to Kurt Sandman, it needs to be done by the summer of twenty twenty-two.
I think we could explore, I understand where he's coming from, but if it's a six hundred thousand dollar other options as in reinforcing the existing floor and alternatives instead of just all they have to jump into exactly what one person is saying. Would, not saying if one fix it, but there may be other alternatives on how we go about fixing it.
Sure.
Yeah, we, we should get some prices on it because engineers throw out prices because they, they don't know, they don't care what stuff costs, they just throw it out there.
Right. Instead of tearing it all out, maybe we just need to add some floor joices next to it.
Yeah, you guys will be able to decide all that at a later date. Just to give you the heads up, this is, we got it checked on, and it's, his recommendation is it's gotta be looked at as fresh. Hopefully, you know, that number is like a third of that, then you'll be, you'll only have to spend two hundred thousand, you'll be like, woo!
Very likely.
You know.
Because anybody can fix it for twenty thousand dollars or whatever.
There you go.
And considering moving the science room, I've always thought that that room up there would be an amazing art room because it has probably the best light in, in the building, right? Because it's got the windows that extend out where the art room would be as, be less good for that.
Well, if you, if you moved it and took out all the weight of the science tables, maybe it wouldn't deflect anymore.
Would pop back up.
Yeah. The next item we have is track signage, and this is referring to Staring Bank and then wanting, you know, donating fifty thousand dollars. I got an update from John Zetica. And he talked to someone who talked to Jay Praska at North Dakota Department of Transportation last week and found out that they have reached out to the Federal Department of Transportation to seek clarification on whether or not this is considered on-premise or off-premise. It sounds like they're, they're having the same issue in other communities across North Dakota, so hopefully they find out something soon. So anyway, to be determined then whether we get fifty thousand based on whether they allow, the Department of Transportation allows us to have a sign out there. But Staring is still interested in wanting to do that, have their name up and give you fifty thousand. And the last thing is graduation, and the question there is who wants to be up on stage and hand out diplomas or graduation as a school board member?
I'm willing to do that.
If somebody graduates, she knows.
Unless anybody wants to play people at all. And we're anticipating a normal-looking graduation this year with our students together on the stage and.
Yeah, I really think the only, the only limitation we have to consider is like not having over the max of what the allotment is in the gym, that was a nine hundred thousand, somewhere in there, which I don't anticipate that being.
Okay. Next is committee reports.
I got one thing, I just thought of it when I went out there. The weather's getting nicer. They turn the drinking phones on.
The drinking phone's on?
Yeah. You're just a bulletin out there, you don't get COVID from services anyway, so.
The, does it state in our plan, you want me to sub that to plan and hold the drinking phones on?
Yeah. I don't think we even made a motion, I think you can.
We can do that.
And I, you know, one thing I've noticed when I go to the school website is that pesky COVID plan pops up. And yes, I, I've got that, can that, can that go away? I mean, it still should be on the website, but I, I don't think it needs to be as prominent as it is. Easy to find, but not persistent. We've already discussed negotiations. I would just add as a committee report, I'm a member of the logo task force, which met here last Friday in this room. There's a group of, I don't know, eight or so people that met to discuss the development of a new logo and then going on that into some gym environment signage, uniformity, that kind of thing. But the number one priority is to look at some new logos, which I, I believe should be the final design or recommendation, or two or three recommendations should be brought to the board to be reviewed and approved, to be an official representation. So hopefully we will have that before, by our next meeting. Staffing update, of course, we were here last week for superintendent search, and we hired Mr. David Getz. Had four excellent applicants and looking forward to that smooth transition in the future. With that, oh, I should mention, and I will mention to Sheila as well, something that I have thought of is that as we were sitting around this table and doing interviews, I think for each of our applicants or interviewees, there were things that I heard that I really liked. And I wonder if you all could take a few minutes and write down, here are some things I heard from you, Mr. Getz, that I liked. Here are some things I heard from others that I would suggest, that we could help say, these are some things that you didn't say, but we liked hearing. Wondering if each of you could, if you think of three or four or review your notes and think of some things, see some things that you think you didn't hear from Mr. Getz that you would like him to know about, send them to me, and then I can compile them and share with you. I will also reach out to Sheila and ask her to do the same.
I believe we need a motion to accept the.
Oh, that's right. Yes, of course. All right, with that, there is in your packet the contract that we discussed and was negotiated with Mr. Getz. Is there a motion to approve that? Or my signature and April's?
I'll make the motion.
Schmidt's moves to approve the contract in our packet, is there a second?
No, sorry.
Thorpe seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed say no. Motion carries, the contract is approved. With that, we'll move on to the, the routine matters of the minutes. There's minutes, excuse me, minutes of our regular meeting. Special meeting on March thirtieth. And that's it. Is there a motion to approve those two meeting minutes? Schmidt's moves to approve the minutes in the packet, is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Thorpe seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries, minutes are approved. Next, we'll look at the reconciliation, the balance sheet, and the revenue and expenses reports. These are historical financial statements for the month ending March thirty-first. Were there any questions about those reports?
Are we on track then, April, to coming for the year?
Yes, I believe so. We look pretty good.
All right, any other questions or is there a motion to approve those three reports as appearing in your packet?
I'll make the motion.
Rosendahl moves to approve those three financial reports, is there a second?
One second.
Thorpe seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion or questions? Anything anybody brought to you, April, as questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries and the financial reports are approved. We'll move on to the review of bills. These are bills to be paid, approved to be paid.
Is there a, is there duplicate copies in there, I hope?
Uh, what are we?
In, in the twenty-five thousand dollar, the first two pages, a lot of them are duplicated, I'm guessing that it was put in twice.
Oh, yeah.
I saw it, it's really big, yeah, sorry, it was twice.
Yeah.
And ten is the same as page one oh five?
Or the repairs were in there twice.
Oh, did I give you the same report twice?
I think so, I'm hoping so.
So was there a report then that you did not give to us? Like, was there a supplementary follow-up report? I have something called March invoice listing that starts on page one oh four with Aller Trophy. And then there's April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one invoices.
One oh four, one oh five, or something.
Yeah, there is two March invoicing reports that I gave you. So I just do, I just put in there extra. And it's gave you the March invoicing twice instead of the MasterCard billing. Hold on, I'll share that.
So the, the two reports, March invoice listing are the same as April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one invoices?
Nope, so you have a March one, and then it says April, and it says March again. So instead of posting the March, the MasterCard accidentally grabbed the March.
Okay.
So it should be your March invoices that happened after the March meeting, and then today's bills, and then our MasterCard bill.
Okay, so this is the first time we're seeing the MasterCard bill. Was there anything of note in there that is out of the ordinary?
No, we had some playground equipment repairs, but otherwise it's pretty much stuff just the end of the year, and then renewals are starting for next year, so.
And how about our track equipment for thirteen thousand and two thousand, or, sorry, is it fifty-one? Is that stuff we had talked about last year at this time that didn't happen, or this is additional stuff?
It, it was all equipment needed to be able to host meets, so new hurdles and those things. It was, it were, it was items that we talked about last year that we did not purchase till now.
That is correct.
And we have four meets scheduled, I believe, two varsity and two.
I believe so, yes.
And I think that was in our, the, the equipment was within our discussion when we approved the upgrade of the track, was it not?
But, yeah, that's what, is this in addition to that equipment at that time, or is this part of those dollars from that time?
Well, I don't think we would have bought any track equipment last year.
Yeah, we didn't buy any equipment last year, they know.
We didn't buy mats, and we, we bought like fifty thousand dollars of equipment.
The, the pole vault mats and the high jump mats were purchased last year, so that we had them for, for practice in addition to. But we didn't buy any of the, we didn't buy any of the hurdles or any other things that were, that we needed to be.
But we didn't buy any of the, we didn't buy any of the hurdles or any other things that were, that we needed to build a whole track.
I'm fine. All right.
So the majority of this is hurdle. About $11,600 is hurdles. And then 855 are starting blocks. So that's where the majority of that bill is.
Do we have a? I think we do the electronics for starting guns for the, with the lanes. What I'm saying is when they, you run the 200 to 100, somebody gets hit the button. Is it automatic or we have timers at the end?
Well, we're gonna have, we're gonna rent, we're gonna lease a timing, the fat timing system that, I can't remember the guy's name, comes out of a particle. He'll come and do it. Um, and it sounds like that's what everybody's doing that.
It's more.
Number one, number one, you can't afford to pay for all that equipment. Number two, in order, you, it's a struggle to get people to understand how to make it all function. So we'll have someone come in here that will be doing the timing and use.
They're not gonna have any people sending all their doing the old.
All right.
I have money on you.
Any just further discussion on the bills or is there a motion to approve the bills as presented, including the MasterCard bill that we saw on the screen?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Schmidt's moves to approve the bills. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thorpe seconds. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries and the bills are approved. Our future meeting dates are Tuesday, May 11th at 7:00 AM. Tuesday, June 8th. Does that have to change to Monday because we have to, uh, canvass the election?
That is correct.
Okay. So that's going to have to be Monday, June 7th. According to century code, we have to meet six. Yep, May 11th, 7:00 AM and Monday, June 7th. Um, and typically we've met in the evening, I think in June, but we can discuss that next week. And Dr. Steinhoff said he'll be with us at that meeting?
Yes.
And he might be leaving town right after that.
Well, I don't think I'll be leaving town, but I will be, um, based on the time that I have off, I'm not, I'm not planning to sit in my office until the end and then ask you to pay me out for all my vacation days. And I feel like I need the time more than I need that. I'll be able to be available by a full on end. But because of, we're purchasing a spec home, so we're, we're needing the basement to be dug and all that stuff. So we're going to be living in spot 15 of Memorial Park campground for about two months, I think. So I'm going to be transferring stuff back and forth, uh, to a storage facility in the meantime. So anyway, that's my, my plan, but I'll be with you, um, through the June school board meeting and then probably not there a while.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? That's a good thing. I cut a lot of policy off of the agenda. Cause otherwise we'd still be here for a long time. If not, thank you all for your hard work today as well as last week. I'll declare this meeting adjourned at 8:57 AM.